Open this meeting at 6:35. Um, public input. I don't see anyone, so that's, nope. No student report until next month, or next meeting, right?
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chairman.
All right. Continued business. The 2018, 2019 school committee goals. We had a discussion last time. Is there anything that has changed since then? All right. With that, then I'll take a motion to accept the school committee's 2019, 2018, 19 school committee goals.
I move, Madam Chairwoman, I move to that we vote to accept the 2018, 2019 school committee goals. Second.
Yep.
Just that I could, just a comment.
Yes.
Assuming they get adopted tonight.
Yeah.
Do you find the action plan, kind of the timeline, helpful? I can work on that for the next meeting to show you kind of some benchmark data like you have had in the past with people responsible for helping you to achieve those goals, when we might seek to do that. Okay.
Yeah, that would be.
I can work on that for the 24th then.
Perfect. All right. With any other further comments or, nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. And up for our second reading is how to get rid of a school committee member. Sorry, the removal of, if I could have a motion to accept the second reading.
I move to accept the second reading of the removal from office of a school committee member.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We're on fire today.
Yeah.
We'll be out of here by seven, right? Okay. Would you like to present the next?
Kind of an opening day report in the year, so I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman. So I'm very happy to inform all of you, as well as the community, that we had a very, very good opening to the new school year. I appreciate people being able to make our opening day meeting with staff. Those of you in the school committee, your presence is always appreciated, and I know it means a lot to the, to the staff that see you there, and it does to me as well. We opened school on Wednesday. It was warm, and it got even warmer on Thursday, but we made it through those couple of tough days. Our elementary schools really were awfully warm, but the middle high school functioned well and, and I think, you know, provided the level of comfort that we would expect from this building. But people did a really nice job. I'm very thankful to the principals and their staff for, for such a smooth opening. It was really very uneventful. Michael has done a commendable job working with, with Rosalie McKillop in the, in the business office on the bus, busing, bus routes, bus transportation. There have been some issues, but I don't know that they're anything out of the norm. You know, it takes a few days for, I think, the bus drivers to, you know, sometimes we have new drivers, we have routes that add stops to them, and so it takes a couple of days to navigate that. But I think each day we've, we've seen some, some improvement. We issued an email today to parents about some changes that we anticipate being able to make later this week based on feedback we've received from parents about the busing. Food services have done a commendable job. Our custodial staff, you know, as you all know, do a nice job keeping our buildings clean, and they certainly did yeoman's work to, to have our schools in the kind of condition that I think we've come to expect for opening day. So my, all reports are from my end of a very, very good opening and just, you know, it's important to, to, for me to be able to publicly acknowledge all of the people that helped make it work. It's kind of interesting to be in a school on the first day of school and just see how the students just kind of roll right into it, and it's like business as usual, and so all, all indications from my end are that it was very good. I provided to you traditionally kind of the opening day enrollment, and this is only the opening day enrollment. We will provide a more formal, kind of the official October 1 enrollment at, you know, at a meeting following the October 1 deadline, and we, that's kind of the use, the, kind of the state issue deadline for official enrollments at our schools. There's nothing tremendously out of the ordinary here that we might have expected in our, in our opening day enrollment, but, you know, certainly we can, Michael and I can entertain any questions that you might have if you do have any.
Yeah.
Just know that we will be presenting to you something more official in, in early October.
I know it fluctuates a little bit, but I have a question. We're about 41 students below what the projection was for this year. And I guess it's basically what, K1 in grade nine for where the differences are, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So I guess my bigger concern is moving forward, and, and Michael and I were talking about this before the meeting started, we have these, we have some elementary school class sizes that are great, very small.
Mm-hmm.
In 99% of the cases, it's not feasible to eliminate a class and a teacher and go down from three to two, or four to three, or whatever.
Right.
But I'm just curious about moving forward. Small classroom sizes are great, but it's, if you get to a point where you can cut, would that be, say, we had, and we could do three of 20 rather than two, four of, whatever, whatever it is.
Yes, I understand the point, yeah.
I guess I'm wondering if, if that's the direction we go in, because small classes are great, but it's also more expensive to have more classrooms and more teachers. So I don't know what the projections call for now, given we're 40 below what we projected this year. So I was just curious moving forward.
Yeah. I mean, I think we'll, we'll see how the October 1 official enrollment comes in in a few weeks and see if there's any, you know, changes. Typically, there's some slight changes in some of these preliminary numbers, and then we'll, we'll plug that into the, to the projections and the, and the ratios and see, see what changes and how, how the three and five year and 10 year projections change. And then we'll also look at some of the things we learned by some of those cohorts that did something a little bit different than what we maybe anticipated, or what wasn't what we expected over the last, at least the most recent trend, the two to three year trend, and then, and see where we're at. But I think, I think those projections, when we see it in October, will certainly, to me, I always look at that as kind of the kickoff of, of budget in a stand, in some aspects, is it will kind of give us an idea of, from a staffing perspective, where things stand, or will stand.
The eighth to ninth, what, the eighth to ninth was interesting. I first saw that, and I was really concerned. I was like, wow, we're getting like 10, 11% of kids going to private schools again. Then I talked to Michael, and, and I was shocked at, you know, what the real reason was, so.
Yeah, we had, I think, certainly an unusual number of families move.
Right.
I think it was 11.
Yeah.
I think it was 11, 11 families in the ninth grade that moved out of town.
Yeah.
Out of state.
Right.
In a number of cases.
Yeah.
And that's a little unusual.
That's where most of that, that was more than 50% of the kids that.
Yeah, yeah. That was a very, that's very unusual for us.
Ninth grade, yeah.
And I would be willing to bet, too, you'll see that number fluctuate.
As we will in other areas, too.
But I wouldn't be surprised to see if, you know, the number at the high school up, up a little bit.
I was reassured that, again, it was a very small number going to private schools. It was either.
Very small.
They moved out of town, or they're going to the Volk's School, which is.
Correct.
Which is good.
That's right.
Mr. Webster, what's interesting with elementary, if you look at a class like the first grade and the fourth grade, they both have 177 students. There's eight sections of the fourth grade and 10 sections of the first grade.
Right.
Just because of how they're broken up between the three different schools.
Right, right.
So it's literally the exact same number of students. In, in one of the grades, it's 10 sections, and the other, it's eight sections.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, because you, you can't move, you can, you can move people around classrooms, but you can't move them around schools.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the only way to sort of reduce that class count.
Correct, yeah. Again, I, I love that we're able to do this. I mean, I hear you on the budgetary constraints. I mean, I love that we're able to have class sizes that are small. My brother's a middle school teacher, and his main complaint this year is he's got a lot of special ed students, and he's got 27 to 30 kids in each class.
Yeah.
And so he's really struggling. But that's my, my only question is, I know this is a breakdown of the elementary. How are we looking at the high school? Because I know in the past, that's really where we've, when we get to budget season, we end up seeing the number of classes that are.
Yeah.
You know, more than 27, or whatever the cutoff is. I mean, do we see a little bit of relief at the elementary, or at the high school this year?
My, my belief is you would see some relief. It's just it's too early to give you the breakdown of the class sizes, just with schedule changes and all.
Yeah.
But my suspicion is both with the additional position, the enrollment decline, I think those two things alone will, will give us much needed, and I think probably some substantial relief in some areas. I mean, again, when, you know, we did lose those students out of grade nine, but, you know, we, it's hard, because similar to what you were just talking, what we refer to as spot redistricting with the elementary schools, in the high school, it's, those students still take a class somewhere, so it's not like you can, they're all being reduced from a particular academic level in a particular grade. They're kind of across the board, but.
I mean, overall, we're down more than 50 kids at the high school this year where we were last year.
Correct.
So there should be some relief, but still, my guess is we're going to have more classes at 27 to 30 plus than.
You may not have the 31s or the 29s.
Right.
Yeah, that, I think we were at 812 last year, and I think this year we're 754 as of today, so, yeah. But some of that is, we did have, I think, since I've been here, the largest graduating class since 2003, so.
Yeah. It was this year's, this year's class, wasn't it?
Yeah, correct.
The majority of it.
So that's, that was expected, that there would be a drop off just from the grade eight class coming into grade nine and the senior class moving on. So again, we'll have the, the kind of the more, what we refer to as the official, the October 1 data shortly after that deadline at one of your meetings.
And I think the October 29 meeting will be an official enrollment projection presentation.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Webster? Mike, would you walk us through the large capital?
Yes. Bring your packet this evening was revised kind of large capital plan in the template and format that we've been using over the last five years or so to guide our large capital requests. And I also have about a 10 to 15 minute PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to kind of walk, walk the committee through, and a copy of that presentation was, was included as well. So I'm just going to take a moment and pull that out. I'll try to move, move through this. But for, for the agenda this evening, we want to talk a little bit before we look at some of the revisions to the five-year plan and particularly focus on fiscal '20 next year's request. Just as a refresher and to highlight what did get accomplished through the approved projects in FY '19. Again, we'll talk about FY '20 in more detail tonight, but we'll also discuss the future capital needs over the next three and five years. We'll review the CI PC timeline and their, their submittals that we do and go over that process where everyone's aware one, one more time. And then we will open it up for discussion and questions, and the idea that tonight will be kind of an introductory to the plan, allow some, some questions, and then kind of get into maybe a more deeper discussion at the, at the next meeting. So in FY '19, you may recall, we received the one-to-one devices allotment of $60,000. So we're happy that that was like the fourth consecutive year that that request was adopted. And as you know, we've been moving, moving forward with the, the one-to-one initiative at the seventh grade and that rollout. So here are some pictures of the Chromebooks coming in, and the tech team over the summer working hard to set those up, and then Dr. Daley and Doc, and Dan Downs and so forth, and their, their team meeting just these couple of weeks ago before the opening of school with the seventh grade families and going through that process with them. We also had the instructional technology equipment approved this past year for the $45,000. So we had included that in the plan for the first time last year, as could have been every other year, request. And that also helped add to the fleet of Chromebooks, as well as helped replace some some needed iPads, and we're also looking in the future to start this, the smart board replacements. So, get some good photos of some of the work the tech team did over the summer. The middle school gym floor of, actually, I believe it actually was $40,000 allotment. And here are some pictures highlighted here. So it came out very, very nice. I think everyone is very, very pleased with the condition of the new floor, that the schedule went seamless over the summer, and it just looks great, and it's just a great addition to that school. And then the final appropriation and request that was approved was the multi-function activity vehicle. That was an allotment of $30,000, and we did order that vehicle off the state contract. Here's a, pictures of what that vehicle will look like. It's currently in, in build, and, and we are anticipating on receiving that vehicle, we hope, sometime before the holidays in December to put that to use. But certainly, you know, we're very grateful for the support of these, of these projects. As a refresher, we, we have three major categories that we look at our, our five-year capital plan. We have our vehicle needs, we have a fleet of vehicles, technology requests, our facilities requests, and building grounds needs. And what qualifies a request for a large capital, as a reminder, it's a, it's a total project or unit cost greater than $25,000, as well as something that would have a useful life of five years or more. So anything that does not meet that criteria would need to be funded through the operating budget through a small capital request. So before I get into some of the requests for FY '20, fiscal year '20, here's kind of a three-year snapshot of our, of our capital plan and requests that are in front of you this evening. There's a couple of vehicles over the next two years in need, in need of replacement. The technology plan that has remained consistent over the last five years, the one-to-one devices and that allotment of $60,000 to make that happen, and then adding the $45,000 of instructional technology equipment every other year. And then the facilities, so the largest need is on the facilities standpoint, and all of those needs are certainly geared towards the elementary, the elementary schools. But we will be looking at, you know, requests for fiscal year '20 of a little over about $335,000. But over the next, really the next three years, we do have needs, and we do have requests that we want to get funded, and it's a little over $1.2 million, sort of ask at this point over the next three years. So we'll come back to this in the presentation. So I'm going to start with technology, and a very important need that we need to continue to request as part of the plan, it's been on there for a number of years, what I just spoke of, is the, is the one-to-one computer devices. Fiscal year '20 would represent year three of this program, where we provide each grade, seventh grader with a Chromebook. But this is certainly a very important part of our curriculum at this point, and it's certainly been our number one priority in terms of large capital requests. So we want to certainly continue this, this program, and this, this request is very much needed in order to allow us to do that, to meet our digital learning goals, and to meet the state testing requirements as well. I talked a little bit about the $45,000, so we were very grateful that that amount was funded this past fiscal year in 2019. Those funds were put to great use this past summer. Most of the principals for this year, one of this program chose to add some, the elementary school principals to their Chrome, their fleet of Chromebooks. The little school needed to replace a set of iPad, iPads that were used at the primary grades that were in very much need of replacement. So we look to add, this is, this was a chart that was put together a year ago, and we feel if you, we were to do everything at once, we would need almost $200,000, a little greater than $200,000. So we received the first allotment of $45,000 in fiscal '19, and just, we want to kind of continue the effort to, to replace these instructional technology devices. And again, it's, it could be Chromebook carts, it could be iPad carts, and it could be the instructional, you know, smart boards that are used at the elementary level. So this would be a fiscal year '21 request. We would, we're looking to do this every other year, so this would not be a request for next year, but for two years out. We look at our vehicles. The most, the highest priority vehicle that's included in the plan for fiscal '20 next year is the replacement of the 2007 special education van. This is the oldest van in our fleet of vehicles. We currently operate a fleet of four special education vans. Three have been replaced within the last five years, and the 2007 van is the, kind of the last and the oldest of that fleet that has not been replaced for a number of years. This vehicle has over 220,000 miles on it. It's used as a spare, but it, that being said, it is still a very important part of the fleet and of the, the special education program that we use in-house to, to transport students daily. It does get very frequent use when other vans are either being serviced or out for a variety of reasons. It's also used for a number of times in the athletic and extracurricular area. And the plan would be to replace this vehicle and then transfer it to the food service department, who actually has a 2005 vehicle, which even is two years older, but that vehicle's a low, lower usage vehicle, and we feel like if we could extend the life of it, if we were able to replace and transfer to the food service department. That 2005 food service van would be the van that would come offline. Future vehicle requests. This is in the building grounds department. We certainly maintain some equipment in the building grounds department and a couple of vehicles. This is certainly a very much a high usage vehicle. It's used for snow removal and plowing and sanding in the winter months, and, you know, we feel it's, it may only have 45,000, you know, miles, but fiscal '21, this vehicle would be, you know, it's 10, 10 years old, and we just feel like it's gotten the, the maintenance and the ongoing repairs to keep it running is, is getting to a point where it's becoming expensive annually, and we think we need to consider for replacement over, within the next two years. So it is on the plan for fiscal year '21. So then when I turn to facilities, which is the final category of our replacement, I just, before I start to get into fiscal '20 requests, I wanted to just kind of snapshot, because obviously we're in a brand new middle school and high school building, the majority of our facility needs are clearly located at the elementary level over the next five years. And when we look at three elementary schools, these are really the requests that are part of the plan, part of the five-year plan, certainly school security enhancements, and because of the good work that the, the members of this school committee did, Superintendent Bernard, with State Representative Brad Jones, the funding of a lot of this school security enhancements is actually not part of the plan, because we're getting a special earmark state grant in the amount of $175,000 to make these school security enhancements happen this, this year. So that is across the entire district, including this building and in some cases, but the work of that, receiving that grant has allowed us to kind of not ask for that as part of this process, which allows us to then shift some of that request to other areas that we are certainly in, in need of. There's electronic systems upgrades, which we'll hear about, it's replacing some of the, the fire alarm systems, the burglar alarm systems, as well as some of the paging intercom systems and so forth. But there's certainly some, some high, highly expensive, big-ticket items on this list that we need to consider in the outer years that you'll, I'll, I'll reference at the end of the presentation. We did some analysis of the hood roof. We need to consider some, some roof restoration at the hood, that, that roof is getting to be over 20 years old. The hood school boilers, which have been on the plan for a number of years, as well as modular units at the little school. There's a, there's an extended modular unit at the little school that houses the early childhood classroom, and we certainly need to have, be mindful of that unit coming to the end of its useful life in, over the next five years. So fiscal '20, so it really became an exercise of one of our priorities of all the items on that list, and then an effort to sort of balance the, the funding over the next three, four, and five years, to try not to have such a large ask in any given year for the town to support. So that was kind of the exercise we went through as an administrative team, and putting together the, the five-year plan this year. And one of the, of the high priority projects of facilities was the little school paving project. You may recall, this came very close to getting funded a year ago, fell just short. The CI PC has kind of made a commitment that they would look to make this project a, a priority in fiscal '20. So we have re-looked at this project a little bit over the summer. We have decided to, to up our amount slightly, so we can kind of do it all in one, in one, you know, one swoop or one year, make it a little bit more smoother, efficient project. That seemed to be the way the CI PC was, was going last year when we presented the plan. But we feel for the $85,000 request, we would be able to repave the majority of the main lot here, shown in photo two, as well as pave the old playground area, which is this kind of gravel area that was put down as a temporary solution when the old playground was removed. And we, we feel by doing that, we would be able to actually expand and capture an additional 10 to 12 parking spaces, much needed parking spaces there as well. If you look at this chart, which was what we actually put together last year and provided to the CI PC when we were presenting and advocating for this request, we feel the blue is, is the top priority, and based on the square footage and the proposals we've received, we have received from the town's paving contractor, that blue, which would include the old playground area, would cost $65,000. The amount we would like to add to that would be this front, kind of bus loop, which is highlighted in orange, as well as, you know, address, you know, some of the curbing and so forth in this area. And we feel like if we were not to do this in phases, but try to do this as one request all in one year for the $85,000 amount, it would be much more seamless and, and efficient to do so.
Where is the, the old playground area?
So the old playground area is in this.
The one at the top?
Yeah.
The playground on the side?
So it's like, it's in the top left of the blue. Of the blue area. So that would be repaved, and then we would actually, would capture additional parking spaces in that area.
That adds up to almost $100,000 if you.
No, it's. Yeah, so we're only, the blue and the orange is, is the request.
Oh, so you're not going to do the purple?
So we wouldn't do, we, we quoted out the, the pink or the purple, as well as the yellow, which is Barberry Road, which the CI PC felt last year that's the town responsibility, and they would want it to coordinate that, but they didn't feel like it was, the school's responsibility to pave part of Barberry Road. So the requests would include the high priority areas, which would be the blue and the, and shaded in orange, which is that front loop, as well as any curbing that is in that area as well.
What's the condition of the back section?
That is, it's in better shape, and it's not highly used.
Oh.
So that's, it's in definitely in, in better shape than certainly the blue, the blue section, which is the, the high, high need area.
Would, would the goal still be to have a, potentially have a second drop-off area as well?
We would look at that as part of the project if funded, correct, as we would hope, have, hope to do last year.
Yeah, I think overall the parking, because if you look at it, it's like a little section here, a little section, there's no.
Right.
There's no cohesiveness to any of it.
We would try to redesign that flow, that traffic flow as well.
And do we know if the town has the Bar, Barberry Street on its list of, you know, relatively soon to be paved?
Yeah, we, it wasn't, my recollection of last year is it wasn't on that list for this year, so we would, we would certainly advocate for that, and the CI PC is aware of that, and when they, we do hear their road program, it would be part of the, the conversation.
Obviously makes sense.
So that is the little school paving project. The lighting upgrades from the little and the hood schools, we talked, we had this on the plan last year, we felt, certainly continue to feel that LED lighting, you know, projects certainly at the little and the hood, and some of the, the main common areas, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, main hallways, the library, and replacing these fixtures with LED lighting would not only significantly reduce our energy consumption and allow us to save in reduction of electricity costs, but we also feel like it would give just a nice, you know, brighter, brighter look to, to many of these, these common areas that are highly, highly utilized. We also would anticipate that we would potentially receive, and we would try to partner with RMLD, and it could result in as much as, you know, 25 to 50% of the cost of this project in the form of an, an RMLD rebate by, by working with the parameters of their rebate program. We've been in conversations with them to make sure that, that would happen. Yes.
So I saw in a lot of the notes, you talked about the different rebates. I assume the number that you're giving is before any rebate, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we would have to fund it and, and purchase the light fixtures. There's a certain type of light fixture that would fit into their program, and then once the project is, is installed and fully up and running, they would come out, do some analysis, look at some energy consumption numbers, and if it fits into their parameters and they feel like it would, we'd work closely with them, there'd be rebates that would happen, that would come into the town, you know, after the project is complete.
And I would say anecdotally that we did a similar project in my office, where we replaced old fluorescent.
Yes.
Tubes with LED lighting, the typical two-by-four light panels, and.
Yeah.
The quality of the light made a big difference.
Yeah, so I think it's the quality, it's the energy consumption savings.
Not just energy consumption, it's, it's better light, yeah.
Electricity reductions. I think, yeah, it would give the, the school certainly a nice, a nice bright, brighter feel in these common areas, certainly. And then I think the idea would be if it's successful and it goes well, and we work with RMLD to do this, we would look at other areas as well and just continue with this program. we would look at other areas as well and just continue with this program. Request number three for fiscal year twenty on, in under facilities was, this is sort of a new request, but in working with Mr. Hardaker over the summer months, and going back to some of the, the challenges that we've typically seen at the little elementary school in particular, and certain wings of the building, we did have a company BLW engineers come out and perform an assessment in two thousand and seventeen, and even revisited that assessment this past summer. And they provided a recommended solution that would help eliminate some of that struggles that the school has had to properly heat and balance the heat, in particular in the older part of the school, which is the C-wing. So the project, the recommendation, based on the, the engineer's assessment, was to replace the unit ventilated with a low-limit discharge control mechanism. That had an estimated cost of about forty-five thousand dollars. And the second request was to, actually, it was just a rebalancing of the C-wing unit ventilators, which certainly, so it's not inexpensive, but that estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars. But we do feel this project would make a significant improvement to the, in particular, the heating of, of that, that C-wing, which has been an ongoing challenge at the school.
Is rebalancing a, involve materials? I, I, I don't know much about it, but I thought rebalancing was more of a adjustment kind of process.
Yeah, I think, I believe their assessment, it could involve some replacement of some of the, you know, the mechanisms within the unit, the ventilator. Yes, I think it was a little bit, it was labor as well as some materials. The final request was, we felt was pertinent for consideration fiscal year twenty, was what we're referring to, electronic system upgrades at the elementary schools. We, we felt it was, made sense to, to do this in two phases. This approach has been on the plan in the past. But when the alarm company came out, in particular, to inspect the systems, in particular, at the hood and the little schools this past summer, who are the older schools with the older fire alarm and burglar alarm systems, we feel like we're getting, they're getting to the end of their useful life. And we, we have some proposals from the American Alarm Company that would address some of the issues and replace predominantly that, some of these systems at the hood and the little schools. But we just feel like they're not going to last forever. And the idea is that phase one, fiscal year twenty, we would focus on these most pertinent, your fire alarm, you know, burglar alarm systems and panels at these schools. You know, thirty thousand dollars would achieve that. And then a continuation of, of all systems would be consideration, but less of a priority would be the paging, the intercom, the bell systems, the wireless clock systems, you know, upgrading those systems to more modern systems, allowing for greater uniformity and consistency across all, all three schools. We do have proposals from a couple of companies that would allow us to achieve that. And that's considered in fiscal year twenty-one right now as part of our capital plan. But the, we felt this thirty thousand dollars, which is the fire alarm systems at these schools, based on some proposals and the assessments that were done this summer is warranted. So when we look, that was fiscal year twenty. So then we look at some of the future plans for consideration on the plan, you know, things we didn't focus heavily on, but that are certainly of need, is we continue to have the hood school modular demolition project for consideration, you know, a couple of years out. So we continue to assess the, the hood school mods, and we're trying to get as, as many years, certainly out of those as they can. They're safe, they're structurally sound, but we still feel like that needs to be on the plan for consideration. The phase two of that upgrade of the systems, as I just spoke of, the hood school boiler replacements, a few years out, but they're, you know, they're, they're over twenty years old now, and we do think they need to be considered for replacement. The asbestos mitigation at the little school, you know, a few years out, but we like to continue that program. Everything is, you know, there's no danger, everything is, is safe now. We just like to continue and pick up that mitigation program. We did have an assessment done of the hood school roof, you know, moisture analysis. You know, for the most part, things came out, came out, you know, it was in relative good condition at this point in time, but the, the roof is getting, you know, twenty-plus years old, it's reaching the end of its useful life. And we think a, kind of a restoration project would be something we'd want to consider, continue to, to look at over the next few years. Certainly, the, the boiler project at the hood and the roof restoration project, if, you know, considered down the road, we would certainly, would be candidates for the accelerated repair program with the MSBA, with their, with their grant program. So we'd want to consider that, you know, down the road if, if these projects, you know, get, get supported, or we, we feel that they're, they're necessary as we continue to assess them. And then the little school modular unit, we just kind of wanted to put that on the radar of the committee at this point. That unit is, you know, about eleven, twelve years old, it, it's, it's not going to, to last forever. They do have an end of a useful life in mind. It's in, it's in relatively good condition at, at the moment. But, you know, we feel in the later years of this five-year plan, we need to certainly, you know, have that, be mindful of, of that unit. And it's something that would be needed, so we do feel like it would need to be a kind of removal and replacement at this point in time. And then sort of a, is a, a project we would sort of love to do, although it is expensive, would be to fully upgrade the hood and the little schools' energy management system. So it, they would include the entire school. Right now, it only includes the boiler room. Certainly, this building, as well as the bachelor building, there's, there's greater controls, and that energy management system extends throughout the entire school. If we were to be able to do that at the hood and the little, it's much more fine-tuning and, and regulating of the, of the heating and the cooling in that building. We do feel like there would be an energy consumption savings if that were, were to be able to happen as well. So a request summary for, this is actually a fiscal year twenty. We're in fiscal nineteen, but these are actually requests for next fiscal year. So I apologize for that, we're actually, this is fiscal year twenty request summary. And the computer devices, we, this is just kind of a, you know, a quick administrate, central office administration's thoughts on list of priorities. We, we would plan to kind of discuss this in greater detail when we ask the committee to put forward a, a vote at the next meeting. But we feel the technology items of the computer devices would have to be considered a top priority. Little school paving project is the next priority. The hood and the little upgrades, that fire alarm, you know, systems and burglar alarm systems as priority number three. Replacing the two thousand and seven special education van as a, as a priority number four. The little HVAC upgrades as, as number five, and the hood and the little lighting upgrades as number, number six. We, we honestly feel that they're all great projects, they're all in need, they all have a purpose. Many would allow us to be greater, more energy efficient. But, you know, if we were to rank them, and the CIPC does ask us to rank, this is where the administrative team sort of landed at this point in time. As a reminder to large capital CIPC process, we would be looking for school committee approval and support of our large capitals submissions and plan this month of September. So you're hearing the presentation and getting the report this evening. We would discuss it in greater detail on the twenty-fourth and ask for a vote of support. In the month of October, I think the CIPC has extended their deadline a little bit this year. I believe it's October fifteenth that the CIPC request to, to come from us to the CIPC. So that October, December is the CIPC submission and department presentation will take place. The ranking and approval by CIPC members typically happens in January, February, and March. And then the CIPC presentation to either the select board, a board of selectmen, happens in, in April. And then town meeting approval happens in June. So thank you this evening, and then I'll just entertain any questions at this point in time.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you.
I have a few questions or comments if I can.
Okay, great.
Do you want me, do you want me to come down first?
Sure.
Let me come down and then we'll check.
Yeah, we can go back to this.
So I have a few questions, Michael. So one, one question is, seems like the state's actually doing better financially than it thought it was going to be. And so some, some of the bigger projects include the hope to try to get funding from state or federal, you know, reimbursements for that. Is there any merit to trying to prioritize some of those, because it might take more than one year to approve? Or to try to get that, to get on the list? I'm just wondering if like, the boiler replacement, if there'll be more money for those now, and if in the future, it's not there? Should we be trying to submit those applications sooner rather than later, if, if there's funding available now that might go away?
Yeah, it's certainly a good, a good thought. I think those are certainly, they're both, the ones that would qualify, at least in the, the Mass School Building Authority's accelerated repair program, or would obviously be the, the hood school boilers and the, the roof project. And to qualify for that, for funding, you need to have the, the project or the, the roof of the boilers or the windows, whatever you might be doing. It's basically roof, boilers, and windows. Needs to be at least twenty years or, or greater, and it has a value of at least a quarter of a million dollars, which both of these projects would, would fit into that criteria.
Today or, or at the date that you have them?
The date of the request.
Okay, so they're, they wouldn't fit today necessarily?
Um, no, I think, I think they, some of them are getting close. The hood school boilers, I think we, are reaching twenty, the twentieth year this, this year. So the, the process is, is you submit, it's very much somewhat like a school building project. You submit a statement of interest, and it gets ranked among many other of the requests that come in at that time. They kind of have a fixed amount of pool of money, and they, they rank, you know, the, the need. And if supported, you need to then show evidence by a certain deadline that you can have the, the local support of that project at, at town meeting. So I think, and our approach was to sort of try to balance out the needs. That we, we have some small needs certainly in the next couple of years, as you saw. But, you know, have these larger projects, you know, on there, maybe in some kind of three to five years out, so we can kind of give the, you know, the CIPC and the town the ability to sort of plan for that a little bit, because I think what typically would happen, and we saw with the little school roof project, is it's a great process, working with the accelerated repair and the MSBA, but it does add some overhead to it. We saw, so you're gonna, you're gonna have to hire a project. Once you're in the pipeline and you're approved, now you gotta play by their rules in, in some sense. So by, by doing so, they want to have some oversight. So you gotta, you gotta hire a project manager and a, an engineer and do a, do a redesign, even though you have a pro, and proposal, they want it, they want to have their own designers that handpicked, review it. So it does add overhead, does have upfront costs. So it tends to increase the costs by a percentage, as we saw in some of the numbers we're showing on the plan, which are basically proposals from vendors that we've worked with that are familiar with the, with the equipment and the roof that do good work, and they're, they're valid proposals, but we're going to see an increase. So I mean, to me, I think we need to be just all on the same page and ready to be fully supported and behind before we submit, because we wouldn't want to submit, get funded, and then not have the support by the town to be prepared to, to, to pay, to pay for it and be part of that program.
I mean, I think you still save money, but it takes longer and it's more work.
Yeah.
For our admin.
Right.
Our administration.
You wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to put it in FY twenty anyway.
Right.
Right, right.
I'm just thinking, again, it was just a thought about, rather than pushing out three years. If, yeah, if, if money's there now, there's no guarantee it's going to be there in the future. I'm, I'm very concerned about taking modulators offline if they're still, and I know that's not also this year, but like, if they're still working, I, I hate losing class space. And I know that some of the, some of the people that are using, some of the programs that are using the modulators right now, I think at least at the hood school are maybe even some that we can get tuitioned from, or we're renting out, and so.
Correct.
Are any, are any of those still bonded right now? Because I know at the last town meeting, it came up about what projects we're still paying for. I would really not want to take off something that we're still paying for.
This is actually the last year of logging all those units in terms of their bonding. So, but I mean, I think it's a valid point, and I think our, our effort and approach would be to extend the life of those units as long as possible. But, you know, a couple of years ago, we recognized the fact that, you know, these units are twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old. They do have a, an end, an end game, an end life, you know, useful life to them. And we need to start, you know, planning, so we're not surprised when the day comes that.
I think we're there with the hood school.
I was gonna say, if I recall correctly, it's ten to fifteen years on those things. I mean, there's no foundation, there's, I mean, it's like.
Replace the handicapped excessive ramp at the hood school. We've, we've spent money to keep them functioning. We replaced the floor.
And that's, and that's not a, a great use of expenditure.
It's not.
Yeah.
Which I think was ultimately what happened with the school construction project of this building, was we had so many modulators that we, they, we were gonna, we were gonna be millions of dollars into replacing them.
I think we lost more than a, did we demolish a dozen or so up here?
I think you're exactly, maybe fourteen, eight at the middle school, I think it's six in the high school, but yeah.
Now, the other question related to that is, we will be losing, if we did the hood modules, we'd be losing seam rental money, correct?
That's likely. You would use those, the rooms that we would need to use for the so-called hood school students would be those that we are renting out.
Is that significant revenue?
It's about eighteen thousand dollars. So it's about six thousand.
It's a consideration.
Yeah, it's a consideration. I mean, it certainly helps, it helps, it's an offset to the budget, to the, to the maintenance and repair and the building contractual services. So it's, it's a help.
Well, and especially if we just hired a, a position, or we just funded a position to try to look at special education and trying to keep more students in-house. Some of those programs that could be built may need extra spaces. And I, I guess, I, I don't know, I mean, we can't, again, it doesn't make sense to spend more money than we're making on them. But at the same time, is there any thought on replacing modulators or?
That would be really expensive.
I mean, if you look at the little school mod, it was about, it's almost a half a million, you know, five hundred thousand dollars just for that one room. So you almost, you're gonna, you're gonna triple that.
And I think our, I think our point with the putting it here, as it was last year, was just to, to raise the awareness that there is a life expectancy of these, you know, and we're, we're, we're upon that. And it's more just let people know that, you know, there may be a time, and this is not to alarm anyone, but there may be a time when we have an inspection done there, and we're told, look at, this is your last year with them.
Yeah, it's kind of a year-to-year thing, and at some point, we're gonna get the word.
Exactly, that's exactly right, it's a year-to-year thing.
I mean, in, in terms of the ranking of the request, again, I mean, it's hard to prioritize what, what you need the most. I mean, I, I completely agree with one and two. The other ones, I mean, again, my personal one, I probably would put the spare special education van below some of the other ones. And I understand that it's always, I'm probably always gonna think vehicles are less important than some of the other things. But, you know, we always talk about making sure the schools are clean and warmed, and heated, warmed and cooled. And, you know, HVAC projects, which are saying that right now, one of the elementary schools is not, you know, properly cooled or heated, is a concern of mine, but I, I don't know, I mean, it's hard for me to prioritize amongst them. But that's the only one that stood out a little bit to me, is that special education van is above things like properly heating and cooling one of the schools. But I don't know what other people think.
I think it's just.
And lighting as well, I mean.
The risk of not having a, an appropriate backup or a reliable backup. And if a van goes down, you know, it actually would have a significant cost impact, because then we'd be forced to shift those runs to an outside contractor, which would be significantly more expensive to do it on our own in some cases, so.
On the, sorry, on the HVHC, you said the C-wing is, like, the heating, it doesn't work, or it's spotty?
It doesn't work to the, it doesn't work at an optimum level. It could be better.
Yeah.
But it, it's not like they're freezing or anything?
Uh, no, but there are days when it's not functioning well enough.
It's been a long-term.
I mean, it's not a, it's not a chronic thing. But it presents itself, you know, if it's particularly cold, last winter was particularly cold.
We brought in the temporary heaters.
Yeah, it's, it, it's not good. You know, it's, but it's.
The distribution thing, like some rooms are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not so, we're not so sure. We think, we've been told that some of the units are undersized, and, you know, they're just for the space that they're heating. But it, it's, it's not good. We, we go through the same way, thing, by the way, in the central office, when we're, we changed the, this ranking twice.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
To try to give you a, you know, we're, I think like Michael said, and that you probably all feel, like, we want them all. But I think on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna be asking you to, you know, to kind of make the hard decision about what is the priority ranking. This is just our kind of, you know, our final ranking to you before the actual vote. But we're certainly, you know, I think the, I think the one I would fight the hardest for is number one, because that's, that's a program we're committed to. But beyond that, yeah, they're all.
I have a question about the electronic systems one. You mentioned that was included fire controls, and I guess my question is, how, how serious is that?
Yeah.
How serious is the current situation?
It's, I think it's not addressed within the next year, year or so.
We, we were alerted to it being on, but kind of like borrowed time.
Yeah.
And that was something that came to us late this summer.
Late this summer.
And I think Michael said it in his presentation, that was kind of a late add-on to the list. It, it concerned us enough that we felt we needed to highlight that. And I think that's why we put it at the ranking that we did.
First time it shows up on the list, it's, it's.
Yeah, it was, there was a comprehensive inspection by the alarm company that brought it to our attention. It's kind of like, you know what, this, this was concerning enough that we felt it had to be high on the list.
It's functioning, but it's, it's old and it, you know.
We would certainly.
It's on the end of its, its years.
If it went in the meantime, it would be a problem, but we would have to address it. We would have to do it, but.
Well, that's, that's sort of the question. I mean, I don't would that, how much would that add to the cost and would it cause any disruption in the sense of?
I mean, the biggest.
If the controls weren't working.
Went down, we would have to immediately fix it.
Right.
Yeah.
And we, I would assume we might not even be able to have people in the building if it was.
Uh, that might be the, the, yeah, that might, that might be possible, yeah. Depending upon when it happens and how long the repair is. My sense is, working with the company that we do work with, they, we have a very good relationship with them. They're good and they would be responsive, but it would be the kind of thing that they are hearts or, you know, that might delay it.
Depending on how much it costs too, that's one of those things where you might have to go for a reserve fund.
Correct.
And for.
Exactly.
With the town.
Right.
Yeah, this was, the quote, we have quotes that are just about a little under thirty thousand dollars now to, if we were to do it.
So our thinking was, let's, let's hope to get through the next year with it, but put it high on the, for the list of priorities.
I agree. It's high, it should be high on the list. I'm just wondering if it should be higher. That's what I, I was.
Yeah.
Just because of its.
The nature of what it is, yeah.
Um, the, the grant from the state for the security and stuff, would that fall underneath it?
We've had that. It's a good question, Janine. We've had, we had that conversation. I think, given the nature of what we want to try to do, particularly at our elementary schools, around schools' safety and security, that money's gonna get eaten up pretty quickly, I think, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't know that this would fit within the, kind of the spirit of what that money was intended for, because I think it was more tied to security and safety.
I noticed here, that line item is zeroed out. Was, is that part of that reason?
So we, we had, before the, before the state stepped in through, through the efforts of Brad Jones with the, um, with the money that did come our way, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, going back several months ago, when we had kind of just the preliminary discussions around the FY twenty capital requests, we had talked about, you know what, we're gonna need to put some money in. But once that money came through, we felt we were in a position to back that off and go with some other projects that seemed a little bit more feasible for us now.
Thank you.
Yeah, but we wanted to still include it as it's, it's still a priority and something that we're moving, that we're trying to get done. It's just another, we're definitely funding mechanism.
I think just the one, if you look at history, we're not gonna get all of these. And if you look at the history of how much we've been approved.
Correct.
One eighty we got this year is the most we've gotten in the last five years. So you're almost looking at those. The last two items are, are gonna be on the chopping block. Unless they decide to, they can decide to reprioritize too.
They can, yeah. They've done that before.
Right.
The other thing I'd like to mention, if I could, Madam Chairman, is about the technology money, that, that seventy-five thousand dollars. I think it's important for the committee to, I think, be reminded of, but also, as you go forward in the CIPC work, that I think we were, we were in a position to gain that seventy-five thousand dollars largely because we could commit to a kind of a matching contribution from the town. And so I think, you know, that's why that list, that item still remains on the list, is because we committed to Brad Jones, quite honestly, when we met with him, Mr. Webster and I, you know, we, we felt we could work with the committee, the Capital Improvement Landing Committee, to secure that money still going forward. So I, unlike the technology money, excuse me, unlike the school safety and security money, the technology money, I feel, is like we have an obligation to honor that with match. Do you, am I saying that right?
I agree a hundred percent.
So that almost makes that a requirement. Therefore, at the top of the list, even, only for, if only for that reason.
Correct. If somebody didn't know that, then they might say, well, I thought you got the seventy-five thousand. Why does that sixty still have to be on there? And that's the reason why.
Brad distinctly said, don't, I, I wouldn't like to see next year a zero request for.
Yes, you're right.
Technology.
Yes.
You're right.
That's exactly what he said.
You're right. Yeah, absolutely right.
That would, that would make him look bad.
Correct.
In terms of pushing it for us.
That was going back to the last October, that you kind of said that managing contribution is, is important.
On that note though, um, you know, it doesn't mean we're gonna get these grants every year, but I think it's worth, worth going back to Brad again
Yeah.
and seeing if we can do a couple more proposals. Doesn't have to be technology and security and safety. Maybe it's,
Correct. It'd be something.
Maybe it's this thing at the Hood School, emergency replacement of, you know, fire panels or, or whatever.
Yep.
So I think it's worth looking into that.
So the idea is that on the twenty-fourth, I think we'll be looking for the committee to formally vote the prioritized projects that we would then, um, through Michael, um, submit to the CIPC by their deadline. I think it's September twenty-eighth.
They've actually extended it this year. It's October fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
A little bit more time.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
All right, there are no minutes.
No minutes, Madam Chairman, correct.
Mike, would you like to do the budget?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as a follow-up to the August twenty-seventh meeting, um, when we discussed the performing arts revolving account and I request to formally adopt a motion to approve such revolving account for the ability to, to handle the receipts and revenue coming in from the newly adopted user fee for this school year. Uh, it certainly created a, a, a healthy discussion on the, the use of that account and, and the receipts and the expenditures from newly created, uh, performing arts revolving funds, as well as the, the existing student activity accounts and sub-accounts, and particularly at the high school and the middle school for drama, band, related, related items. So I went back and certainly worked, met with some of the staff, um, you know, got some feedback from, from, from auditors and had some conversations with my peers. And, um, you know, we, and actually, and, you know, clearly looking at the Massachusetts General Law, which, which govern these, these accounts, which is chapter seventy-one, section forty-seven, and put together an attempt, um, you know, a table and a memorandum to each of you that I hope brings some clarity and, and to, to the questions that were raised on the August twenty-seventh meeting. But the idea was that the high school performing arts newly created revolving fund, um, the, the receipts coming in would mainly be the participation fees or the user fees, as well as the ticket sales from the, the drama, you know, and performing arts related productions. The expenditures from that revolving account would be the, the approved stipends listed in the, uh, the, the teacher's contract. The, the, you know, set productions, props, equipment, advertising rights, all related expenses to put on that musical production, the musical, the play, and so forth. And that balance is allowed to carry forward to the next fiscal year. The existing, any existing approved student sub-accounts, which we noted at the last meeting, the Mascar's, um, Notorious Band. We felt if that student club is in existence and they are running a fundraiser, those typical, typically those fundraisers are for a special club trip. Uh, that they may be fundraising for to go, to go here, to this, either this special performance down in, in Disney or a special trip. Um, or they might be fundraising for a special type of equipment that's kind of above and beyond what the curriculum supports. We felt those would continue to be, it would be appropriate for those to continue to be deposited into the Student Activity Agency account and then expended for that purpose of that fundraiser. So those, those sub-accounts would continue to exist. Uh, I think that's consistent with the, the laws and the regulations. And I think the auditor, my conversations felt that would be, that would be, that was appropriate as well. So I think that's what this memo intends to kind of lay out. And that would be, be our plan, you know, moving forward this fiscal year. I don't know if there's any, that provides a clarity.
I know you had a lot of questions about this, but I'll just say, I'd just say, first of all, thank you. This is really helpful. And my one question is, it says on the, uh, under the Student Activity Account, stipend payments are not permitted, which makes a, a perfect sense. What about any over, any leftover set production, other production costs? Can they be funded by student account through fundraising or, in other words, if?
They could, they could.
Yeah, as long as, anything, anything but stipend.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I think, thank you, Michael, as well. Um, I mean, I was the one with the confusion last week, last time, so I wanted to understand this. But, um, so just to summarize very quickly, so the Performing Arts Fund, this is not, it doesn't matter how much is contributed as a result of your group. You could have more members paying fees. You could have more ticket sales than somebody else. The expenditures don't relate to how the income comes in. But with the Student Activity Agency account, if a particular group does a fundraiser, that money that goes in is their money for their specific task. So it would come out to them. Okay.
That's correct.
I just have one question. So the current balance in the Mascar's, I'm assuming that some of that money has been raised through student activities, notorious singing up in Salem, et cetera. How are you gonna split that when you put it into these accounts?
So, the Mascar's, so they actually, there's a healthy balance, year-end balance in the Mascar's account that we looked at at the last meeting. There's also a smaller balance in notorious, um, account as well. So the, the Mascar's balance that's in there now is gonna be essentially, you know, slowly spent down this fiscal year. But tho- those funds will be spent almost entirely on the startup costs for the planned production. And then, once those funds, you know, are spent down, then the, the ongoing fundraisers will be what, for what that, the fundraiser, the purpose of the fundraiser. So, um, the idea is that we'll slowly, that set production cost to get the, the musical or the play up and running will slowly transition over to the revolving account.
So in a, in a, in a practical sense, it may not happen actually on the books that way, but that money becomes part of the eighty, the eighty-eight oh one money?
Yes.
For each, for each group.
Yes.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you.
I see some more highlighted names on the staffing.
A few more, Madam Chairman. We're closing in. So we were fully staffed for, um, the school year. Just, I, I did want to highlight for you a, a couple of last minute hires since your meeting on August twenty-seventh at the Bachelor School. Teresa Gavoge is a special education paraprofessional and Jennifer Peterson is a grade one long-term substitute teacher. At the Hood School, Rebecca Moscariello has been hired as a special education teacher in the RISE program. And at the middle school, Ashley Egan is a special education paraprofessional, as is Beatrice Donko.
Oh, for bids and donations.
You have a few.
Yes, we do.
Good start. I will go ahead. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of two thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from the Little School, the Little Elementary School Parents Association to support transportation costs for class field trips during the twenty-eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen school year at the Little School.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I move that the, uh, school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of two hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-five cents from the Little Elementary School Parents Association to purchase headphones for students across grades at the Little School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the folks at the Little School have been, PA have been, have been busy. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents from the Little Elementary School Parents Association to offset transportation costs for their ductor field trip.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of five hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-one cents from the North Reading High School Cheerleading Booster Club, Inc., for the purpose of purchasing new cheerleading uniforms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great start to the year.
Yes.
Pointing out, they're usually in ascending order.
What's that?
Order. That I was just pointing out that they're usually in ascending order.
There is a reason. If you really wanna know, I can tell you what it was. The more expensive one came in late.
All right.
It's a true story.
The subcommittee's schedule, there's no updates at this time, but.
I have one report.
Okay.
Just about the thing that you and I both went to, Janine. Uh, I just think it'd be nice to recognize that NORCAM put on a couple of informational sessions for students or parents that were interested. I know that, um, Janine and I both went to the one that just happened last week. And I don't know what I was expecting, but there were five students there and there were four adults there in addition to Janine and I. At the second one, there was a few at the first one. So that was good. I, I mean, I thank Phil Healy for, um, coming and speaking with everybody. And it seemed like there was some interest, especially, and it was nice at the end, he asked why everybody was there and the students. It was nice to see the students, who many of them were younger students, that were interested in video production, editing. And so, you know, and one, one gentleman in the audience asked, you know, what the school committee would like to see, you know, broadcast. And so if there are, you know, if there are things that the school wants broadcast, um, seems like there are some people that are interested in taping. And so maybe even put in requests a couple of weeks in advance or something, and they might be able to find somebody that would be interested in coming and covering it.
Would there be a way, um, to reach out to all of the clubs and find out if they would like?
It would.
You know, I kept going back to the robotics. I thought, like, if they had someone maybe doing like a time lapse thing where they show them kind of starting the creation, you know, building it and all that kind of stuff, and then going to, like, actually maneuvering it.
Yeah.
That that might be something that would be nice to air, so that, you know, the parents or.
Sure, we can start to spread the word for that.
That, that's a good turnout. I know in the past, NORCAM's tried to do these things and they've gotten maybe two people show up. So that's a good turnout. I, I did want to ask a second question related to what Janine just mentioned about the robotics. I noticed they're promoting on Facebook to join the robotics club, but it's not mentioning the robotics club we just approved. So I'm kind of confused as to what is the intersection here.
So the, the, the first robotics program is continuing. What, what I asked the committee to do was to essentially endorse that and, and fund a stipend for a liaison to the club from the district, a district employee.
But is that a school club or is it just a liaison from the school working with the outside organization? Because it seems to me like it's not.
I would say the latter, much like the Science Olympiad functioned in the past, you know, similar to that.
So it won't be, quote, a club at the high school?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, before those, like, if, if the robotics wanted to be taped, and one thing, like, if a parent wanted to tape of something, a game or something, you know, they could get a better camera to be able to tape it, as long as NORCAM can air it, and then you could get a copy as well. So, you know, again, hopefully that'll encourage people to want to tape their son's soccer game.
Yeah, games and everything, yeah.
Yeah, on NORCAM and they get a copy of it.
Are there any limitations to doing, uh, plays and musicals?
There, there are. I mean, that would be something that would have to be worked out and permissioned.
Those things do have some licensing.
I think the chorus stuff is a lot more open to, like.
Plays, musicals, anything that's licensed to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and even some of the sporting events, especially the playoff games.
Right.
A lot of times there's, there's fees.
MIAA steps in on the state tournament.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I can, I can start to spread the word that there's people available to do that.
Yeah.
So.
They can go see Phil.
NORCAM Phil.
And also the word that, that this is available if someone who, parents who were involved, you know, who's, doesn't have to be the people who just showed up at the meeting either, I mean, if they want to become involved.
And the idea is we're gonna, I think, run four more this year, correct? Four more workshops?
Yes.
Two series of two each?
Yeah.
There was a CIPC meeting last week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there, the highlights of that. I know Michael was.
There was, yeah. I wasn't the other minute.
Yeah. But they restructured the, the committee, you know, obviously the annual, just same people in same positions with the chair and co-chair and clerk and what have you. But, um, it was really just focused on, they talked about the October fifteenth date. We have a meeting to talk about on the seventeenth, um, of October, to talk about what's been done and funded in the past and looking at that and talking about it, and then seeing the requests that have come in. Um, so that will be October seventeenth. A lot of the meeting was focused on, um, the DPW director, the new DPW director came in and spoke about the roads. They do a report called the. the roads. Um, they do a report called the Beta Report, um, and so they handed out sort of this road conditions report, and it basically showed that the towns, um, they have a rating in this beta system, and the town has gone down, um, quite significantly from what was expected. Um, and they're really just going to be looking at this and making some recommendations for prioritization for some of the road paving. Um, and I think some of the issues that I've learned just from hearing comments was that they've always had funding allocated to it, but getting it done was, executing on those plans has been a difficulty, and it's time to step up and start to do that.
Yeah.
So, um, it was, it was a lot of that, and just talking through a lot of those details and, um, you know, the methodology around this report and what the plan was moving forward. Um, the Capital Improvement Plan, um, Planning Committee.
John, it's not a committee, but I don't know if you had a report, I didn't see anything. I don't know if I wanted to get a, give an update on the meeting with, um, the New England vote.
Vocational School?
Yeah, Voc School, yeah.
Yes, it's not a committee, but I'm happy to do that.
I think that'd be good.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, uh, what Mr. Webster's referring to is, um, he planted the seed last, late last spring with the vocational school, Northeast Regional Vocational School in Wakefield, to see if there may be interest in helping us out with the construction of dugouts at the new softball field. So, I met with, um, some folks on last Wednesday at the vocational school, there is interest. They then came here on Friday, um, the teachers and the students that would work on the project, carpentry students, to kind of get a bird's eye view on their own. And where we are right now is to, they're putting together a stock list for me, um, that will help give us an idea of what the cost would be, so we would need to incur some cost for materials, but the labor would be, um, kind of the classes, the carpentry class of students at the, um, at the vocational school. So, um, there, there seemed to be pretty high interest, and I think there was an interest in getting that done this fall, if in fact we are able to move forward with it. So, um, the structures would basically be shade covers, for lack of a better term, but, you know, something that would mirror the style of the baseball dugouts without the walls, so a similar, similar roof line, similar design is what I conveyed to them. Um, I think it, you know, for somebody that knows what they're doing, I think it's a pretty simple project, so, um, but I, that's, that's the update I have to date, so I'm kind of waiting on their identifying what they need for stock, and then, you know, working with somebody, say, for example, like Moynihan Lumber, and see, like, what would that ultimately cost for us to purchase.
So no walls?
Correct.
Well, the fences are already, they're already there. So this would just be a, a rooftop covering.
Like a sun structure, basically, yeah.
On, on top of the, this is an existing dugout structure, there's just no roof.
Right, it has, it has fencing.
It has fencing, but this, yeah, so they need to, you know.
It's really to shade that area.
Right, because the sun just beats down on.
And in a hot day, you don't want the walls anyway.
Right, exactly.
Right.
You go to the baseball games, the kids don't sit in the dugouts on the baseball games at the, at the high school field, because it's too hot.
It's too hot, yeah.
Hopefully the advanced kids will work on the home dugout and.
Right.
Right. I made it clear that we did want to. I did make that clear, actually.
Okay.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, if you talk to the town engineer, as I have, he's quite frustrated with that. I, I spoke with him late August, because I think he thought it was going to be done, you know, midsummer.
Yeah.
Um, and then it was kind of getting to the start of school, and I checked back in with him again, and that was my last conversation with, with the town engineer, but I think he fully expected it would be done by now, too. But, it's kind of a non-answer, I know, but I think it's.
Okay. Um, upcoming subcommittee meetings, the policy subcommittee.
Yes, we're going to work, before we leave.
I think before, yeah, we can pick a day tonight, yes.
And when they figure out when it's going to happen, it will happen in the superintendent's conference room.
The time to be announced.
Athletic Subcommittee, September eighteenth at twelve-thirty in the superintendent's room. The finance planning team. Oh, sorry, the athletic subcommittee is September eighteenth at twelve-thirty. The finance planning team is September twenty at eight fifteen AM in the superintendent's room. The substance abuse coalition, September twenty-fifth at ten AM.
Yes.
It's ten PM, I ain't saying, at the North Reading, um, police station, and then the NORCAM, um, September twenty-seventh at seven PM at the NORCAM office. Do you have anything more on?
I have nothing additional tonight.
Okay.
Oh, John.
Yes, maybe I do.
Maybe give an update on how well the batch school traffic change went. I think it'd be good to.
Yeah, and so, um, I checked in with Mr. Colleen for two days, Wednesday and Thursday, and suffice it to say, he was relatively pleased. I think there was improvement over Wednesday when he, when I spoke to him on Thursday, but, um, yeah, I, I think he's, he's largely pleased with how, you know, he, I think he billed this as a pilot, but he wants to evaluate it over the course of the year, but, um.
I think that there's going to be a pretty large group of parents that are going to voice their opinion otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's mainly, um, the safety of the walkers, so they tried to reduce, they won't let walkers' parents park in, like, the church right there, where they would, and, and it was to reduce foot traffic. Um, but now, all the walkers are parking over by the library and walking, there's no crossing guard to cross.
To get to the school.
Yep, to get to the school and walk all the way up. And in the winter, it's going to be a massive problem, because there's not going to be plowing through that area that they walk through, so it's making the walking or the, the traffic, it's making it worse for walkers.
For student walkers, yeah.
Yeah, for walkers, and, um, and they were trying to reduce foot. So I know that that's been a huge problem, only because I experienced that, and I hear, like, all the people saying, well, we need to all come together and voice our opinions, and I think they want to do it collectively. So I think that that will surface at some point. Um, and the traffic has been tough, no better than it was before, if not worse the first several days, so, I'm, I just keep saying when parents say something to me, I'm like, it's just a pilot, let's see how it goes.
Well, that was the idea, right.
You know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Um, but, and the other thing, too, is people have been talking about the fact that now they're, like, parking and waiting in residential area, where before they were in Haverhill, so if you're a resident, you have this big, long line coming through your, your, um, area, instead of being down Haverhill, which is less residential. Um, so that's another thing that's.
So I guess it's not working well.
So I guess that requires a meeting, because the chief of police expressed extreme happiness with the new system.
You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask.
No, I'm, no, but I'm just saying that, that, that's why I say it requires a meeting.
And this might just be a subset of people, there might be a whole nother subset.
Sure, but I think, I think.
Well, I, I, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I.
I was saying, I think it requires a meeting.
It might just be a small subset that I'm hearing from, so it could be a whole, there could be an abundance and a majority of people that are happy with it, that are driving through.
And certainly, if it's, if there's an unintended consequence of creating a, a tough situation for a group of walkers.
Right.
Yeah.
That should be addressed.
He would be receptive to that.
We need to just have a solution.
His, his idea, I think, going into it was, it was a pilot.
Yeah.
Right.
Mr. Tre, so I'm, I'm sure feedback will come his way.
Right, yeah.
I think the issue was to try to keep the traffic off Haverhill Street, right? And of course, there's always going to be consequences.
Yeah.
And other areas when, when you do that, so. But I think the plan worked in terms of getting kids dropped off, but the consequences.
Might be something that.